Actually, I'm not really sure. My neighbor hopes to walk away.
Just bring it back.
You all good?
Yep. Let me get these here.
Just get it. Forget which way you want.
Stewart, he said.
Stewart, he said.
Oh, yeah, Stewart. That one wasn't about that.
No, it's an awful long way back at night.
No.
All right, there, counselor. Can, can you hear?
I can hear you.
All right.
Okay.
Let me get, uh... Yeah, go ahead.
Right. Call me the order roll call.
Eric Westergaard?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Boltman? I'm gonna get, uh... I'm gonna get Bob Beanster on the phone. So we had the chance to, uh, talk with Bob, uh, a couple of different times today. And you see, uh, the notes from those conversations, uh, were at your table. But we really just wanted Bob to, again, walk us through everything. We get a lot of, of that same information, I think. But really just have him, uh, walk through. And he was at some social event at the Salisbury House tonight, so he'll be happy to receive the call. Bob, hey, Scott Peterson. All right, I'm gonna put you on the speakerphone here. All right, Bob, thanks for, uh, for joining us tonight.
No problem.
Can, can we just have you kind of talk through that notice, notice that we received and, and the impact that that has, uh, that they filed for this payment to the bond company?
Yes, a little bit of a, a background. Um, Grunman Hicks had to provide, um, the city what's called a performance bond and a payment bond and a maintenance bond. And as a part of that, the surety, which is represented by Merchants Bond, the company mutual, agrees that in the event that something happens with Grunman Hicks and can't finish the project, they would both finish the project and make sure that all of the bills are paid to suppliers and subcontractors of that, so that the city is basically not at risk for incurring any additional cost should the contractor not finish. And what's happened here is that Grunman Hicks has run into a cash flow problem and are not able to pay their bills in a timely manner. And so what they've done is they've gone to Merchants, the bonding company, and what they've done is worked out an arrangement whereby Merchants will pay all of the bills to the suppliers and subcontractors, and then when Grunman Hicks gets some money after they think they're supposedly gonna have a sale of some equipment, then they get the retainage paid and all that, so they'll pay them back. So it's sort of like a, in the form of a bridge loan. And what Merchants does in that situation, they want the money paid to them, because what they're trying to do is to make sure that they get, you know, the subcontractors paid in two steps, and then also give enough money to Grunman Hicks so that they can keep their business and finish the project, because both Grunman Hicks and Merchants are, believe that, that Grunman Hicks can finish the project, and it's probably gonna be three weeks or four weeks before it get done. But that's, from the city's perspective, that's a positive thing, because if they walked off the job, at this point, said we can't finish it, then either the city or Merchants would have to go find another contractor to finish it. Merchants would have to pay it, but there'd be a delay. I mean, it's my script, that's likely to be a few months before all of that thing works out. So from the city's perspective, it's better to have Grunman Hicks finish the project that's a lot quicker. And then what Merchants does is they're saying, send the money, it's jointly payable to both Grunman Hicks and Merchants, but effectively, the pay estimate that you approved tonight will get sent to Merchants, and then they will divvy up the money. I don't know exactly how they're gonna divvy it, but they'll give a little bit to Grunman Hicks, they'll start paying all the parties that haven't been paid, like the electrician and the dirt contractor, there's probably another half a dozen or more, we don't know where they are at this point. And so they'll take that money that you approved tonight, they'll disperse that right away, and then they're gonna go through and figure out who owes, you know, what's left to be paid to bring everybody up to date. And what they indicated to me in a call this afternoon was that within a couple of weeks, I'd say the week of January sixth, give them an extra week, give them a holiday, that they will then go through and pay off all of the accounts payable on the project from Grunman Hicks, bring everybody up to date. And then what we'll do as we go forward to the completion of the project, we'll continue to send the pay estimates, which will be smaller as we get down toward the end, um, we'll send that to, um, to Merchants, and then it's their responsibility then to, to get the payables from Grunman Hicks, make sure everybody's paid. And then at the end, after the project's done, they and Grunman Hicks will figure out, you know, how they're gonna settle up. But at least this way, we're not, you know, we're not really in the middle of it. Uh, what Merchants wants to have happen is they wanna get those suppliers and subcontractors paid before any of them file what's called a five seventy-three claim, which is just a claim against the project. If, you know, because the contractor files a claim, the city doesn't pay the claim, they just hold the money, and so then you have to go through the process of getting a pay, get the claim released. So Merchants understands from, on what they do, that it's better to get everybody paid right away so that we don't have to go through the process of having to deal with five seventy-three claims. So really, from the city's perspective, all you're doing is you're just sending, you're approving the same estimate, you're sending the money, um, to the bonding company who will then step up and then will, uh, take care of that. Now, you know, one of the other things that Grunman Hicks could've done, or they could've just not, you know, not done this, just, you know, uh, not paid them, and then what happens is that the suppliers and subcontractors file the five seventy-three claims, then we have to hold additional money for those claims, and then nobody gets paid very quickly. So that's not a very desirable process. They could've gone to maybe a bank and borrowed money, but in this case, because Merchants is responsible to make sure everybody's paid, they would prefer to sort of be intermediary, because they have people to do this. I mean, they, they are a bonding company for a lot of contractors, so every year there's contractors that get in, run into cash flow problems. And so they've got people that know how to, to deal with these issues. They do that, but, you know, that's their, they got a couple of people, that's really about all they do. So they're, they know exactly what needs to be done, how to go through the process not to, not to get things sidestepped, whereas if you just go borrow money from the bank, there's really nobody that's sort of managing it other than Grunman Hicks. And Grunman Hicks is the one who's got themselves in the cash flow problem, so it's actually probably better to have somebody who does it for a living figure out how to get everybody paid. So that, the notice really doesn't affect, you know, all it does is it re-corrects where the money goes. We're not, as a city, will not be obligated for any more money or any less money, they'll be asked in the contract, they'll still finish the contract. Like I say, it's better to have Grunman Hicks finish it rather than them walking off and then have to either work with the bonding company to find another contractor, or us finding another contractor to finish it. So that's kind of where we are. They could've given you a different letter, had they sent a letter that said tons of money all need to Merchants. That generally means that they, Merchants doesn't believe that Grunman Hicks would be viable. In this case, they do believe that Grunman Hicks is viable, they just need to work their way through the, their cash flow problem. So, um, this is a lot, this, this is sort of the, if, for, for a contractor getting in trouble, this is sort of the baby step part of it. There's a lot worse things that can happen if they, if they, you know, basically fold it, or the, I mean, the bonding company forces them to run their business, which they could. So that's kind of where we are right now.
So, uh, Bob, you, you had talked with Mike Christiansen then this afternoon also? Can you just give a little update on that?
Well, Mike Christiansen indicated him that subject to, he had not heard from the electrician, um, this week, or today. I mean, I talked to him twice today, I talked to him this morning, and I talked to him this afternoon, and I asked him to, to go back through and get his schedule updated. Right now, he's to the point where they think they will be, what they call substantially complete, the week of January thirteenth, assuming that the electrician gets done, and the most recent information Scott, that you shared is that the electrician said he had a couple of weeks left. And what substantial completion means is that everything at the new facility would be operational, so that the tie-ins wouldn't be made at either end, so we wouldn't divert the flow. But if something were to happen at the, at the treatment plant, we could go in and make those last couple of connections and divert the flow so that everything, the blowers, all of the electrical equipment, all the control equipment at the lagoon, uh, would be functioning so we could put it in service, uh, at that point in time. So that's where they're, I mean, that data's kept slipping. I mean, when we started this discussion in October, it was gonna be at the end of November, and now we're talking the second week of January. But that's what he shared with me, I think the only wild card when I talked to Mike is that he had not talked to the electrician, and, uh, you know, Scott indicated that, that the electrician said he had a couple of weeks. That's kind of what Mike thought, but he hadn't confirmed it with anybody. So I think we're probably shooting for, you know, sometime that second week of January. I, I caution that, that, you know, that data's slipped, so I'm not gonna say it isn't gonna slip again, but that's where he told me today that they're, they're striving for, they wanna get, they wanna get it finished. It's in their best interest at this point to get it finished, because once they get to a substantial completion, then they, they can file an application for a reduction of retainage, which then gives them some of the, the money back to help repay back to Merchants. So it's in their best interest right now to move that project forward as reasonably quickly as they can. I'm not saying they're putting every effort into it, but I think they're, you know, they understand they need to get it done, and, um, that's, that was Mike's discussion with me about three fifteen this afternoon.
How do we know that they're, how do we know that none of these subcontractors are gonna file a claim?
Well, the question-
Somebody's asking a question, I can't hear them.
Yeah, just, the, the question was, how, how do we know that the subcontractors aren't gonna file a claim? I guess we-
We don't, we don't know that. And if they do file a claim, that really, what'll happen is that they file a claim, um, they, they, nobody's filed a claim right now, um, so that this payment estimate will get approved without any withholding of the, any holding back of the money. If somebody files a claim, then it's simply, you have to hold twice the amount of that claim until the claim is released. So what will occur is that if somebody does file a claim, we'll notice, it'll come to the city, it's a notaried claim that's filed with the city clerk, and Scott will let us know, we'll pass that along to Merchants and to, um, to Grunman Hicks. And what Merchants told the, Jay Farley, Merchants told me today, that if somebody does that, they would make sure they get paid, is the subcontractor supplier, once they're paid in full, they're legally obligated to release that claim. They can't be paid and just have a claim hanging out there. So if we can prove that they've been paid, um, then they're legally obligated to release that claim. If there's a claim, when we, there's an estimate in January, it's like a meeting in January, if there's a claim filed against that, all what we'll do is we'll just have to hold back money that we won't pay at that time until the claim is released. Now, we're, that doesn't put the city in any risk, it's just, it kind of monkeys up the payment process, um, because we have to start holding money to offset that claim. So what typically will happen is, you know, they wanna get the, they're gonna, what Merchants will do is pay this pay estimate, don't spread that around, let the subcontractors and suppliers know that this is payment number one, that another one will come. They're gonna try to encourage, so tell them, convince them that they're gonna get paid by early January and to not file a claim. But if they do file a claim, we'll just deal with it. It doesn't, again, put the city at risk for any additional costs, it just, you know, it just kind of slows down the process of how we pay it. But we're not obligated to pay anything from our, than what we're obligated under the contract. So again, there's a claim, it's really at this point up to Merchants and Grunman Hicks to, we just simply have to follow the law in respect to how we pay the, the pay.
Hey, Bob, this is Dave Jenna, the city attorney.
Yes.
Uh, we've also got a collateral issue out there with, uh, some landowners that've got, uh, uh, some excess ground being used, uh, more than we contracted for, and I don't think, uh, these bonds are gonna cover any of that type of damage, correct?
Uh, legally, they don't. I did talk to, uh, Jay Farley today, they're aware of that, and so that, uh, Mike Christiansen made them aware of that. So what they're gonna work through with, as I was told today with Mike Christiansen, is that they're going to, as a part of their payment to Grunman Hicks, make sure that they get, that payment moving through Grunman Hicks. They won't make that one directly, but they're aware of it, they know it needs to get resolved. So I can't tell you exactly at this point. He had not seen the details of what the landowner's agreement was, but he was aware of that, and knew that they had to work for getting it resolved, even though it doesn't technically come under the payment and performance bond.
Right, it's relatively small potatoes compared to what we're talking about, but-
That's correct.
That politically might get a little hot around here.
I, I appreciate that, and to be fair, uh, Scott, do you know exactly what that number is? I'm not sure I know, it's probably in the file somewhere, but I'm not in the office tonight.
Yeah, you know, and one, and there are two of them I think we know of. One would be about, uh, seven thousand, another one be, I think, about five thousand.
Okay. Well, I will, if you've got any information specific, or I'll, I'll talk to our people in the morning, um, and I'll double that with, um, I'm, typically what happens is that I'll double check with, uh, Merchants and Mike Christiansen. Usually when they get into this stage, I usually check with them about once a week just to check in and see where things stand, and I'll make sure that that gets followed up on. But they are aware of it, they indicated they will get those invoices or bills or agreements paid, so.
Hey, Bob?
Yep.
This maintenance, uh, the extension for a third year now, if we decide to go that route, what happens, what would be the startup date? When that, when the operation starts running, or does it, when we sign this, uh, up in January? Will that, uh, maintenance bond start when the plant operations start? Is that how that works?
No, well, the maintenance bond starts when the city council adopts the resolution that formally accepts the project. So, um, when we started the discussion back in October, it was, you know, at that point, you know, Grunman Hicks indicated they thought they would be operational to an operational point by the end of November. So if that's the case, then we would probably have accepted the project in December or early January, and that would start the maintenance bond, and then they've agreed to extend that maintenance bond to let them accept it in December or January. It would run probably, it would run two years from that date, which would be either the end of twenty-two or the beginning of twenty-three. They've agreed, you know, on finding to extend that one year from acceptance, if we go through the supplemental contract. The difference, what we're running into now is that because they're not gonna finish up until probably January, which we, we likely wouldn't accept the project till the first meeting in February at the earliest, they're now, the window between when that would occur and when they're scheduled to start diverting the flow in early March is likely to be too short to be a supplemental contract. So it's likely at this point, we are not gonna be able to use the supplemental contract, because their delay has pushed us to the point we don't have the window of time to qualify for a supplemental contract, which then means they have to finish everything up, start the plan up, get everything done, and then we'll go adopt the resolution of acceptance, and that will be what starts the maintenance bond. So if things progress like they are, my guess is at this point, we won't, heck, we won't accept the project till probably, my guess is May or June, because they have to get all the cleanup list, they have to show everything's working. And so the maintenance bond at that point won't start until the acceptance. So we'll have to kind of work our way through which way, whether we can do a supplemental contract, which would then start the maintenance bond, and we want a longer period, because we need to get beyond, you know, the good two and a half years past startup, or whether we're going to just have administered in a regular manner, in which acceptance won't occur until late spring, I would guess at the earliest, maybe even into the June timeframe by the time they get everything done, and then the maintenance bond would start, and then we'll probably have a blast for an extension, but it probably won't be quite as long.
Why, why wouldn't it be quite as long if they agreed to a three-year?
Well, the three-year was based on the concept of three years from the time they were, you know, if we, if we accepted it with a, um, substantial, with a supplemental contract. I've not gone back, I, you know, at this point, I've made them aware that the supplemental contract may not occur, we've not had a great deal of discussion about where we go with the bond, so, but he said, he told, Mike told me on Friday, if he needed to get a, a three-year bond, he wouldn't be looking to go that. So I, I'm just saying that they may be, there may be some pushback, but he, he's not said no, he's agreed to the, to the three-year. I think, in his own mind, he still hasn't quite sorted out this difference between substantial completion and startup, and, you know, at this point, we can't really clarify that a lot, we're not close enough to really know where that is. So that's still sort of an open issue. We've agreed to extend the bond period, but I think how long that bond period is gonna be beyond the two years may depend upon when we actually accept the project. So for example, if he can't get everything done, and we don't accept it till next fall, then you would've had six months of operation before, um, you would've accepted it, so you would've had, at that point, you, you've got essentially two and a half years of coverage already, so, you know, whether you go to another four year, or when you cut that back a little bit, I think it's gonna depend a lot on what the acceptance date is.
Yeah, my concern about that is that the pla, plan is not operational, so I, I'm just gonna use the word wear and tear that won't show up if, you know, if we give up. We, we basically have given up six months of in operation of a plant for a warranty that really is, doesn't amount to anything.
Well, I, I, I'm not sure what we've given up on the maintenance bond, because at this point, the maintenance bond doesn't start till we formally accept the project.
Yeah, but I mean, to me, accepting the project means that's when the plant starts, right? We accept it?
No, the, the plant will start before we accept the project. So for example, they're gonna start the, they're, they're gonna start divert the flow, let's say, to divert to March, they'll fill up, you know, in March, they'll still start discharging, but they're gonna have seeding and cleanup and things like that that are, that would not affect the supplemental contract, but they would affect when we would accept the project. So they gotta get all of that stuff done after startup, so it's gonna be well after startup before we would accept the project. So the plant will be fully up and running, I would guess, a few months to maybe even several months after, you know, after startup before we would accept the project. And the bond doesn't start, that two years doesn't start for any of the maintenance bond, no matter what period it is, it doesn't start till we formally adopt the resolution accepting the project, which at this point, I don't think would be before May or June, maybe it could be well into the summer or fall, depends on how fast they get all, all of their cleanup stuff done.
Good.
Is there any chance, Bob, that, that this deal won't work out with Merchants? That, that they will decide that Grunman Hicks is in more trouble than they think?
Well, at this point, Grunman Hicks can be in more trouble than they think. They're still obligated to pay all the bills. That doesn't change no matter how they deal with it. Grunman Hicks goes out of business, they're still obligated to pay the bills. The, the key piece right now is whether or not Grunman Hicks can finish the project, or whether they can't, and we've got, we or the bonding company, well, to get to that point, you have to decide which way to go, which one will go find a replacement contractor. That's where the delay is. So definitely, as long as Grunman Hicks is continuing to be a viable business, you know, we're, you know, they're gonna, maybe it'll slower, but we won't, we're not, well, that would be at risk for any money. It's just a matter of if they go out of business, it's, there's gonna be a delay. The limitation to the obligation, just to back up a little bit, the limitation of what, how much money Merchants or the bonding company, actually, they just represent the bonding company, what their obligation for payment is, is the, is the total amount of the contract. So if you look at the total amount of the contract, that's how much money they would be obligated to pay. Now, because the project is nearing completion, there's really no way they're gonna ever get to the point where they would have to put that full bag of the contract in to complete it. So it's really no risk at this point that the contract, that Merchants wouldn't pay all the bills. So the, you know, whether Grunman Hicks is a viable business or not a viable business, the bills get paid. The only issue is whether Grunman Hicks finishes or they don't finish it. Now, if, if this had happened to Grunman Hicks, like, right at the beginning of the project, and we hadn't really paid them a bunch of money, what can sometimes happen, and I had this happen about a year ago on a project, that I was not the original engineer on, I was bought in, um, when they fired the original engineer, um, because my background is special, I kind of deal with these kind of things. But there, the contractor hadn't come anywhere close to, you know, hadn't done much work, and they vastly underbid the project. So the cost to do the project was a lot more than what their bid was, and so at that project, there was a risk, you know, they only got like five percent of the project, but there was a risk from that one, that the bonding company must have reached their limit before the project was finished, and that would, in theory, put the city at risk. Now, that didn't occur, but when it occurred, the last, the back end of the project, most of it's done, here, there's no way you'll ever reach the limit of what the bonding company's obligation is. So you're, you're protected, there's no real risk to you at all. The only risk is if they don't finish, you've gotta work with the bonding company to figure out somebody to finish it. But either they can hire somebody, pay that, the bonding company, or you hire somebody, and then the bonding company has to pay you, which, it, it, that just kind of goes both ways. My guess is, as far along as the project is, and having dealt with Merchants in the past, my guess is they'll prefer that the city hire a replacement contractor rather than, than Merchants. But this worked very early in the project, it probably be the other way around, but then typically late in the project, they'll ask the city to hire somebody to finish it, and they're obligated to pay whatever additional costs is on, beyond the contract it takes to finish it. So with your exposure, again, it's only the contract amount.
Okay, so if I'm understanding you right, then let's say there's a hundred thousand dollars worth, I'm just gonna use simple money, hundred thousand dollars left to finish up the project, Hicks, they walk away, and then we gotta hire somebody, but they say it's worth two hundred thousand, they want two hundred thousand to finish up the project. The city will not be obligated for any excess, is what I, if I'm understanding you right.
That's correct. Yeah, so what, your example, if I understood right, is there's a hundred thousand dollars left to pay out on the contract, and it costs two hundred thousand dollars to finish. So your obligation at that point would be, if you hired the contractors, you'd have to get a hundred thousand, and Merchants would have to pay the other hundred thousand, or if Merchants hires the contractor to finish, then you pay Merchants the hundred thousand, and they pay the two hundred thousand to the contractor. So in either case, if there's a hundred thousand left on the contract, which in every way, whoever hires the contractor, your monetary exposure is only that hundred thousand that you would vote on the contract. So whatever it costs, it's different. Now, let's say there's a hundred thousand dollars, let's, let's take an example, there's a hundred thousand dollars to finish, and it only cost you ninety to finish, then it gets a little murky, but I've never had one where it costs less than- Then it gets a little murky here, but I've never had one where it costs less to finish than the contract.
We've got a history of all our stuff going over budget, so I'm not worried about that.
Yeah, well, 40-some years, I've never had that situation where it costs less to finish than actually always, so.
I don't know, I think that answers some of our questions. Dave, do you got anything anymore, or what did you think of?
We'll just do it. I was just over here doing the math with, with this payment, there'll be 433,000 left on, to pay, and 290 of that's retainage. And he owes, according to what we found out around here, is about 350, so there's not much margin for error in there, I don't think.
No, I mean, my guess, and my guess is that when all is said and done, that he'll probably owe money a lot of beyond what the contract payments are back to merchants. I mean, I think, I think my Christianson recognizes that, I think merchants recognizes that, that, that the money on the contract isn't going to make merchants whole, that they're going to have to go extract whatever shortfall it is out of merchant, out of Grunman Hicks. How long will they get there? That's not really, you know, we're, we're not going to look behind that curtain. But I think everybody at this point recognizes that, they're probably, it's going to cost somebody more money to finish than what there's money left in the contract. And because they're taking that money, I think that we paid, paid some other things. So I think that everybody recognize that there's going to be a shortfall. And that's just going to have to be between Grunman Hicks and merchants to resolve.
So summing up the whole, what we've got to do as, as the city, we've got to make sure we're paying our, our bills on time, not hold anybody other than what we're supposed to hold for retainage. Two, we, we don't do nothing till we get some hard dates. And to me, it sounds like the longer we wait to accept the program, the better off we are because of the maintenance. So I, I guess, is that kind of the right direction we should be going?
That's correct, yeah. We need to pay the bills in accordance with the direction, and then, you know, we don't want to, at this point, I don't think we're going to rush to accept the project. No, we can't, you know, we can't, you know, if they're done, and everything's done, we can't just say, well, we're going to sit on it for six months because we just want to sit on it. But, you know, we don't have to go out of our way to accept it early by any sense of imagination, so.
So we're not, then, we're also not going to then do a supplemental plan, or we're just going to go with what we got, if I'm understanding you right?
I, I'm just that one. Scott, could you repeat the last part of that?
Just questioning whether we would still have any interest in doing a supplemental plan or not, a supplemental contract.
I think at this point, from what I'm seeing, I don't even know the interest in it because I think the window of time is such that statutorily, we're not going to be able to do it. I think by pushing the completion date into January, they've closed that window. The only way at this point I see that we can do a supplemental contract is if we delay the startup past, you know, past March into April, which I don't think we really want to do. So I think they've caused, you know, I, I think ultimately, it's not going to be whether we want to have a supplemental contract, it's going to be they don't qualify for one, so therefore, we don't have to deal with.
Okay.
So what, what though, the, this March startup, I know that when you say startup, you mean start to fill the, the lagoons, right?
Well, there's two actually part, yeah, startup being, there's a couple of parts to that. The first part of startup is when we're going to, when we take the flow from the lift station area and the existing treatment plants, and divert those flows to the new sewers to the lagoon. So the water's going to flow into the lagoon. So parts of the treatment plant will start up at that point in time, like the lift station and parts of it that need to be, that need to be operational just to put water in it. Then, it'll take 30 to 40 days for the lagoon to fill up. And when we first start filling it up, there's parts of it we can't turn on for several. We can't turn on the aeration blowers because they rely on a certain amount of water over the, the diffusers in order to keep the right pressure on blowers. So we've got to get several feet of water in the lagoon cells that will start those. So maybe two or three weeks after we start putting water in, then we'll start up other parts of the lagoon. And so as we go through it, and then when we finally get the lagoon flow and start discharging, then we'll start up the ultraviolet disinfection. So the startup process will take probably, the time we start putting flow in, till we get flow coming out, it's going to depend on how much, you know, rain we get and how wet the spring is. If the earliest, it'd probably be 30 days, and on the outside, probably four or five days. So the process of startup is kind of a rolling thing that occurs as the water goes in and fills up the lagoon and it starts to discharge. So, you know, there's a series of steps. But once we divert the flow, then, you know, the existing treatment plant's offline, and we're just waiting for the new one to get to the point of to go to the next step of startup, with the idea that we would, we would start discharging sometime in, I'm going to say, early in mid-April.
So do we run any risk by starting to flow that water into those lagoons if the, if the weather's really cold, if it doesn't warm up as much as you think? Do we run any risk and damage to any of that equipment?
It doesn't, it isn't going to affect the equipment. I mean, equipment's designed to, you know, it, well, that equipment doesn't really affect it that by the cold. And then the inside equipment will, you know, will, you know, that stuff, we'll just have to make sure everything is winterized for the winter because it's like, it's just like it's operational. So there's really no impact on it. What you don't want to do is you don't want to start the lagoon up, you know, put a foot or two water in and then let it sit freeze over the winter. So, you know, exactly when we started up, what I told the DNR is it would be sometime in the first part of March. It's going to depend on the winter. You know, if we have a really brutal back half of the winter and water temperatures are really cold when we get to first of March, we might want to sit on that a little bit because what we're trying to do is we're trying to get the water temperatures to warm up as they, as the, the lagoon till, the, the water temperature of the sewage, as it's coming in, in other words, the, the, coming into the treatment plant, will probably get down to around 40, somewhere around 47, 46, 47, 48 degrees in January. And then typically, it'll start to warm up as we get into this deadwood. So as the water, if, if the temperatures are, you know, decent, the sunlight will help along with, along with the natural temperature, will start to warm the water. As long as the water stays above about 40, 41 degrees in the lagoon, we'll get pretty good treat. So our risk is we don't want to have that warm water coming in as it fills up, get to the point where it's under about 38 or 39 degrees, because then we don't get one of the treatment components, the nitrification. So we'll, you know, whether we start on the first of March to discharge in April, or whether we say, ah, it's really cold, we probably need to sit till the 15th of March. You know, I told the DNR it would be in the first half of March. So leading openly, if it's a really bad February, that we could slow that down a little bit. And we'll just have to play that by ear. But really, nothing's going to happen to the treatment plant as long as we don't put water in it and shut it down for the winter. That'll, that's really where you run into problems. If I start putting some water in and then just let it shut down and freeze up.
So will there be an engineer on, on, um...
Yeah, what would be good there is we can go through the various startup stages, yep. And we'll, we'll make the call when to go to the, to turn the different pieces of the equipment on, but that's not really Grunman Hicks, that's not their cup of tea. So we'll, we'll have to kind of walk it through, we'll, we'll tell them if they want to tug over and then, you know, the, the various, the, the two or three steps that occur beyond that, we'll monitor that and then, okay, it's time to turn on the blowers, time to turn on the UV, that's really, that would be our call at conjunction with the city staff, not Grunman Hicks.
Will, will then, will then folks from Canada come down at the same time then? That are...
What was that?
Will the folks that, you know, that know all about this operation?
The Sager system.
The Sager system, will they be coming down at the same time then, or is that, how's, how's that work?
Uh, well, the Sager people, we, it, it depends, the Sager system is designed primarily for winter operation. Because what happens is once the water temperature warms up, the biological nitrification actually occurs in the lagoon cells. And so the Sager startup, if we, if we start up in March and April, and we're getting good nitrification, the Sager prop units themselves will run water through them, but they won't really do much until fall. Because they're, what happens is that when you get to about the first of September, you go through a process of charging, you know, getting the biological growth, going for the winter, and then you run through about April, and then you, you know, they really don't do anything from April through September. It's like a lot of cities just take them offline in the warm weather. So, yeah, they'll be there, whether we start it in November or whether we start it in April, doesn't really make any difference. We still have to, you know, the, the prime startup for the Sager stuff will occur in September through November next fall. And we're, that's sort of independent of where we, the startup was.
Very good, any, anything else? All right. Bob, I thank you very much. We really appreciate you taking time out to, to do this with us today.
Now, why don't you go back to the garden club ladies?
Yeah, you can go back to the garden club ladies now.
Thanks, Bob.
All right, appreciate it, take care, Bob, bye.
Thank you.
That, that's assured, I probably had more fun doing this than the rest of the party.
Yeah, there you go.
That's sad.
All right, thanks again, Bob. Goodbye. Yeah, absolutely. Sounds great? All right, appreciate it. You bet, yep, yep, bye. Okay, Dave Wiltman?
Yes, sir.
All right, still there, okay.
He made it through all that.
Yes, yeah.
So Dave, what do you think? Are we at risk at any point or anything that...
Well...
They're trying to give me a warm fuzzy, but I don't know if I deserve it yet.
We're kind of walking on ice right now, but if the engineer certifies that they're entitled to this particular payment that we're here about tonight, we've got to pay it in order to keep them bound by the contract. We can't breach the contract, or else then they can breach it. But what, where it's going to get interesting is, is when they get down to the nitty-gritty on this, because the numbers are going to get really tight at the end, like I was trying to point out.
And he acts like we're not going to be liable for that, we're only liable for the project.
Yeah, that's why I was asking him the other question about the, uh, the landowners and such, because they're not covered by this bond, and so that's, there's some risk there to the city, although relatively speaking, it's not the end of the world.
It's not. And, and our, have, is, do we only have Schultz's, Nora, that hasn't been paid?
Nora, and then there's additional damage for Judy, Judy Wilson.
And she hasn't been paid.
She hasn't been paid. There is additional damage for Larry too, and they haven't even surveyed his area yet, so that'll be, that'll be an additional one.
So, yeah, they're all, kind of from Grunman Hicks, so right?
Yep, yep, it, uh...
Where I understand.
Yeah, everything outside of the, of the Eastman area is...
As long as they're...
As long as they got money.
As long as they're solvent.
Yeah. Now, on that though, Dave, it, it is in the plans and specs that if they do work outside the Eastman, it is their responsibility to pay. So isn't that covered then under the contract?
Yeah, that would be their direct responsibility, but I'm just saying, if they can't pay it, then obviously, the landlords are going to look to the city.
If they filed bankruptcy, what are you going to do? I mean...
And just from what I've seen so far, if they're going to sell $2 million worth of equipment, we don't know what their obligations are out there, whether they've got another problem child out there like this one. But right now, the numbers, if they continue to, here's the tricky part, if they continue to do the work and get it done in January, that's the best of what we're going to do.
Right.
If they pull up, uh, or, uh, and merchant says, okay, city, go ahead and find somebody else to do it, we, that's a world of, and you're not going to get anybody to come in and pull up and, and mobilize until spring, maybe, and then everybody's, as you know by, he's pretty much got all their work lined up for the rest of the year.
Yeah, we'll be in trouble.
Yeah. So we got to, we, there is risk, but we've got to finish, we got to ride it out on this one. But that's why I was pointing that out, that, that there's not much room for error here.
Right. Well, we just have to hope that Grunman Hicks stays the course.
Well, I'm not saying, but it's, once that starts going sideways, it's, it's pretty tough.
It can be.
Because trying to get another bond company to, to help you out, you're selling equipment, or you're coming into your season here in the next few months. You've got vendors that probably won't work for you because of finding out how hard it is getting. And then there's also the opportunity that they could lose their own men. So, I mean, you've got about three, four things that are not going to help this along with, once you make this kind of commitment.
What we have to watch for is whether or not that electrician shows up out there, or his crew shows up out there. Just one guy?
It's just Audi now?
Audi, yeah. He had one, he had one other guy helped him bury the wire to the lights, otherwise it's just Audi out there.
Audi, yeah.
And his bill was what?
I've known Audi for 30 years.
200 grand? Is that what it was?
200,000.
The whole problem with that though, too, is you, they're telling us January 15th, and Audi's by himself. I don't, I think that's, that electrician's going to... When he, when we talked at that meeting that time, he said he'd be two months, and that was that, that put him into February.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, that, they're, they're telling us what we want to hear.
But he has a certain responsibility timeline too, he certainly must have with Grunman Hicks. I mean, it's his own choice to only have one person working it.
Well, that guy that he works with kind of in the 100 dollars?
There, there's one other guy, I don't remember what name he kept calling him, but he, he's out separate for now, Mike, is that right?
Mark.
Anyway, he was out, he was out with flu for the last week, but, but he otherwise, he was...
But I mean, he must have a contract with Grunman Hicks with the time period on it.
I apologize, I have to tell the restaurant team, you know, about this here shortly, so.
All right. Okay. All right, yep, yep.
Thank you very much.
All right, you bet, yep, thanks, Dave.
So is electrical done in those tunnel things?
He's, he's wiring up all those cabinets right now.
Right now?
Yeah.
So then what's he got left after that?
I'm assuming all the wiring up, all your pumps and...
That runs along the Sager?
Restorations.
If that's all pulled already through, it's just got to be hooked up, right?
It's, yeah, it is not pulled, the, the conduit's in, but it's not pulled.
Oh, excellent.
But the conduit's in?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I talked to Audi again today, he stopped up here right at the end of the day. And Grunman Hicks had, had told him now to, to be done by, attempt to be done by January 15th. And he was, he was, came up, and I think they said, you know, the city really wants this to happen by January 15th. And that's what he was up checking on, is, is city, you know, are we city pushing on that? I'm saying we're, we don't have a hard and fast deadline, but we sure want you to get done as soon as...
Yeah, I think we do kind of have a hard and fast deadline.
Yeah, that's what I said, it's October 15th.
The plumber says he's basically done out there, he tells you the cabinet's built, you know, for the sink and stuff like that. But his piping's all running.
So when would we have to decide whether we want to accept this? You know, like the, they're just calling three years, but I've called it two and a half years because whenever we have the acceptance date. We, we can do that at the last minute. We don't have to do this in February or January, do we?
No.
Because I understand...
Only, only if you're going to choose to do that supplemental contract.
And the way it sounds to me, we don't want to do that supplemental.
But, yeah, un, you know, understanding, if, if, if there was no supplemental contract, my understanding is, I mean, there's no additional year that goes with the two. You've got the two-year maintenance bond that starts, starts of the date that you accepted, which might be, say, July, you know?
Right. I think that's going to be where we're going to be.
And that's just, that's original contract language then.
And they won't be done in January. Well, the last phase, then we could, late fees would still apply then, right?
Yeah.
Good luck getting them. Well, yeah, you're going to go with arbitration, you're going to do all sorts of stuff, we'll still, but again, I think we've got pretty good evidence that we were concerned from the start, I guess. So, I don't know, does that make sense, Dave, or...
Yeah, it does, but the only, the only leverage you're going to have is on the 10% retainage eventually, if they actually get the work done, so. But the, the amount... Uh, but the, the amount that's on the agenda tonight is for work that has been performed. And the engineer certified that, and then there's the material out there too.
I'll show that to you, just take a look at the pay, at the pay estimate. Really, I just noticed the scribbles on the right-hand side. Okay? That is, those numbers are the actual amount of work that's been done during this last month.
The scribbles?
Yeah, that's me. And so the, the one that's interesting is, is say, like, the electric, the electrical contractor says they haven't been paid. Well, a lot of this is on this current pay estimate.
Oh.
How can the engineer sign off on that?
How can it, how can they?
Yeah, if they're drilling us for stuff that's not even done.
It's been done. Oh, yes.
It's done, it hasn't been paid for.
It's done, it hasn't been paid for.
But he said he had to certify.
It's only eighty-two percent done. Eighty-two percent, and a lot of that's buying equipment, so, which is all, all front-end cost, of course.
So this payment's gonna go to Merchant?
It, it, we issue it jointly in the name of Grunman Hicks and Merchant, and it's sent to Merchant.
Merchant, right, okay.
And that, how much is that gonna be for?
Two fifty-five.
Five ninety-two.
And they, and they, and they will use that to begin to pay off these...
Yeah.
I don't quite understand your little scratches.
Okay.
So six hundred ten thousand is seven hundred ten thousand, or seven hundred?
No, just know that, uh, from the, from the previous pay estimate, seven thousand dollars, follow that over, was for dirtwork and gravel. Okay? And eight thousand dollars was for concrete and steel. Otherwise, you can't tell from, from pay estimate to pay estimate what work was done that past month. Okay? That's all that that's intended to do.
So I guess I'm curious, as to the timeline, if we, we make this payment out and, and they said they're gonna use it to pay off the subcontractors or to pay towards what is owed. If I was one of those subcontractors, I'd be wondering, well, how fast am I gonna see someone out there?
Well, the merchants are gonna take care of it.
That's what they said, is that, yeah, what did they say, did they wanna get that done this week?
By, 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 early January, yeah.
Six.
They, they take this pay estimate amount and allocate that out, a portion to folks who are owed, okay? It won't, it won't pay the whole bill.
I know, it's a portion.
And then that's supposed to occur this week.
Which would be the week of January sixth.
No, this week, to pay a look, so you, they'll take this...
They're gonna take a portion of it each person.
This pay estimate amount supposedly pay it out this week. Now, we'll turn around and, we'll turn around, cut the check tomorrow and send it off. And then they're analyzing all of the amounts in arrears, and then they're looking at the January sixth thing about to, to hopefully get caught up.
Got it.
Um, and my last note there, down at the bottom of that page deals with the SRF from Iowa Finance Authority, and there was no impact there.
You know what I'm saying?
But...
Checks is due now.
Yeah, that's a little bit reminds me. I'm sorry, but...
Well, at least it's going to a bonding company.
Well, hopefully, yeah, hopefully, you know, these are local guys, that's what worries me.
Yeah, yes.
Gonna trust somebody.
Especially then when they use us, and they forget no work. That's what ups us even more.
You mean that the local guys aren't getting paid?
Well, local guys aren't getting paid, and then Hicks comes back and tells us that...
That we haven't paid them.
That we haven't been paying.
Is that what they told them?
Yep.
They've told their contractors.
At least I've been looking at the picture, you guys have been paying all along. Been telling quite truth.
See, that's what...
Yeah, that's what's the bad.
No, to tell them, we haven't paid them.
That concerns me.
And they said, they, like, they say that the checks and they are...
But we got no choice to pay this one anyway.
Yeah, no, we should, that's, work hasn't been performed, so I'll make a motion that we pay the...
And I'll second it.
We'll be second, who called?
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Maura.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Tom.
Anybody got any questions for Dave, love, we got him?
Being on the one.
No.
Well, this guy.
Oh, this Dave.
My wife's been awful.
I was trying to get to him.
I think more of our street problem, our street issue?
I got an email just, uh, two days ago from, uh, the engineer's attorney. And he wants to continue to try and settle on the, basically what I call the one-third, one-third, one-third deal. And he wanted to know why nobody was interested in that. Caliber basically told him they weren't going to do that, and so I said to him, I don't know what difference it makes what the city thinks if, if Caliber's not gonna do it, so. Uh, but the, the position is that, uh, we're not paying anything.
We've already paid once.
Yeah.
What about Reardon?
Reardon, we gotta wait for the tax sale, and I gotta get over there to the treasurer's office and certify funding. Or did you already, you already did that, didn't you, Scott? Certified the...
The special assessment?
Yeah, yeah. So we gotta, I gotta go over and derail the, the tax sale certificates. By that, I mean, I have to go in and notify her that the city wants those certificates when they come out.
The sooner the better, right?
We've agreed on the, the color-coded land, right?
We, we have agreed on the strip of land running east and west, south of the second house.
Okay, right.
I wish I had my file, it was the color coding in it, but that's... And I think Mike Green, he's contacted Scott, and he talked to me about it too, as far as setting up that second house for sale. But we haven't agreed on the train station or whatever that thing is, it's full of stuff. That's all we've agreed to, is we'll, we'll vacate that non-used strip.
Yeah, the extension, the extension of Seventh Street would be vacated, everything south of the extension of Seventh Street, which is a little bit in back of that White House. The lean would be removed from that area, would allow them to sell that White House.
Okay, so explain this a little better to me. So you're gonna go and do this tax thing?
I have to, I have to send a letter to the treasurer saying, don't sell those tax certificates to anybody else, the city wants them.
And what, by when do we have to have that done?
I think next spring.
And then?
April thirtieth.
By April thirtieth, probably when the tax...
So then they're gonna be able to sell these two houses?
Right, because our liens are not on either one of the houses.
So then we're gonna move forward with that? When do, when would we, when do you anticipate we'll take ownership of the other?
I think we'll have possession of, we're not entitled to possession of it until we have ownership. When, technically, we can't get ownership until a year and nine months past the tax sale.
So we're gonna wait for the tax sale and then almost go two years, almost?
Correct.
Unless they do something, or we do something?
Well, they can redeem it, but...
They're not gonna do that, no.
And when is the tax sale, April thirtieth?
I think that's May.
May, okay.
May fifteen, I...
There no shortcut then on that for the, for city government? I thought there was...
There might be.
First dibs shortcut on that.
Like I said, I would've, I would've looked at that had I known I was coming down here today.
Who, somebody else wants to buy it?
Uh, city's got, you know, in my, my understanding, is city's got first dibs on, on, basically, on nuisance property.
So we gotta make them aware of it, or is that just take it for granted? You want it?
No, the county, we have to make the county aware of it.
So we gotta...
But we do want it.
I don't want to sell it.
We want to sell it eventually, but...
Yeah, once we get title.
Once we get title, then...
There no hope that, that this is ever going to, the Mike Green's going to, uh, ever be able to referee the sale of... Of that, yeah, of that property or whatever? I mean, I understand the lean, of course, is way too much, but there's no, no discussion about them taking any proactive steps to get this done?
Them, Reardon selling it, credit.
No.
No. We can't get a majority of them to agree to anything, I mean, we need all of them.
Well, so what do you think they're gonna do, just sit here and let it go on a tax sale?
Yeah.
Do you, okay.
They're just gonna make us wait, that's all they can do.
That's all they will do, because they can't do anything else.
So wait, wait, it will go on the tax sale this spring?
It won't go on there because...
I think it'll go in May. Again, I gotta look that all up, but this is just my memory.
Okay. So you'll bring us an update sometime when you're here again?
Correct.
And then the nuisance properties, those three, what do they do, start up again in the spring, or what?
The number, we were probably gonna get title to, we had to wait sixty days after we served them with the notice, and I don't have those dates in my head either, but the last time I looked, it was like another three weeks. And that was, I looked a couple, three weeks ago, so.
So he's gonna forfeit that, you think?
Well, yeah. He hasn't done it, he hasn't answered the lawsuit, and we have to give him a ten-day notice of intention to take a default. Once we do that, he can come in and say something at that point. But at that point, the court is able, after sixty days after he's served, if he hasn't complied with the ordinances or remedied the nuisance, then the court can find that it's a problem and award title. We've asked for title to that particular property. What are the other properties we're talking about? You have to tell me names.
TNS on the highway, isn't it?
TNS and Deb Steer.
And which the other one?
Deb Steer, which was most...
Those are, those are nuisance cases, yeah.
Yeah, they're nuisance.
T and it, all the, all the guy with the stuff on the...
Highway.
TNS highway, isn't it?
The other way.
The siding guy out there.
Highway.
To the east of town.
Yeah. Where he gets, where the siding is.
He's got old trailers and junk out there and...
Yeah. We sent him the notice, I haven't filed anything. Royce filed something, but he filed it against T and S, or TNS, and then the other one was the other, another place or something like that. The judge threw it out before I could get to it because he said, you gotta name the owner of the real estate. And that's not Royce's fault, he doesn't know that.
So Royce filed it with the court?
Yeah.
Why would he do that? Oh.
We're gonna, we're gonna adjourn, we have both adjourned.
One second.
Need to adjourn.
He was probably trying to speed it up, I was gonna have to get in a hurry.